Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I will call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, December the 14th, 2021. It's 9:07. And we're in the Century Jury Room of the Hood County Justice Center, 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. I apologize to everyone today, but we were inspecting the juvenile facility.
Holy Lord God, King of the universe, we thank you, Father, for this day you've given us today. We thank you for the wonderful weather we've been able to enjoy this December. And we thank you, Father, for each and every one of these women and men that you have chosen to deliberate your justice. I pray as they go through this meeting today, Lord God, that everyone that comes up to you and speaks and everyone that is deliberating seeks your voice and your word and continues in your will. Thank you for this day. Thank you for Hood County. And thank you that we are able to worship you freely in this fine nation. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
All right, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag, please.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Overn. That was very nice. Since today is the first regular scheduled meeting of the month, we have the citizens' comments at large. So if anyone wants to speak on any topic that is not on the agenda, you will have five minutes to do so for a maximum of 30 minutes on here. And I have three speakers that so far are wanting to do that. So if you want to speak, you have to fill out a public participation form, hand it to the sheriff. Sheriff will hand it to Ms. Lying, and then they'll bring it up here. Secondly, if any citizens wish to comment about any agenda items, once again, you have to prepare a public participation form, give it to the sheriff. The sheriff will give it to Ms. Lying. She will number you. And again, you will have a maximum of 30 minutes on any agenda item. So if there's more than six people talking, we will divide the time equally between for and against a particular item. So with that, that brings us down to special presentations. Are there any today? If there are not, maybe we'll pick up a few minutes. No service awards today either. Okay. So the citizens' comments at large, number one is Mr. Steve Biggers.
Hey, good morning, Court. Thanks for this opportunity. I want to address today the American Rescue Plan. Been a lot of conversation over that the last few months that we've had. And especially after last time's court where it just seemed like we had a wheel of fortune, people that get money to give to this nonprofit institutions can just pick and choose who you want to give the money to. So what I'd like to submit today for the clerk, for you guys, since you guys appropriate the money, since you vote on the budget, since you send the money out to whatever capital needs that we have, I have a FOIA request for the Commissioners' Court. And I'd like to give this to the clerk for you guys to basically present the budget, present the funds, how the funds have gone, where they've gone. Because quite frankly, when I look at the documentation that I've taken, Katie, thank you. The documentation that I've gotten on this with the American Rescue Plan program that I think Mr. Webster submitted, when I'm looking at the budget that you guys voted on, there's Pecan Valley, Hood Senior, Mission Granbury, Roost Place, which we did, you guys talked about last time, which is very good, Child Advocacy, Hood County, CPS, Texas EMS, EMC, all the nonprofit stuff, the grant program. Well, all of a sudden, we're getting all these other names coming around. God's Food Pantry. Today is Neighbors Feeding Neighbors. So none of those are in this budget. You've approved this budget. This is where the money is supposed to go. And my understanding, when they were asking about the balance of the $339,000, Mr. Webster alluded to the fact that that was even gone in this budget. So I'd like to see where all this money's going. We've had a whole lot of money in our county over the last year and a half from this COVID issue and the President's rescue plan. So please honor that and get that back to me as quick as you can. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and Merry Christmas. As we head into this beautiful season, it's a time to reflect on what matters: family, friends, our faith, our community. Ralph Waldo Emerson said, "The purpose of life is not to be happy; it is to be useful, to be compassionate, to have it make some difference that you have lived and lived well." You all are in a unique position to be useful, to make valuable contributions to our community, and you do. What shall your legacy be? It may come as no surprise that I would like to invite you to seek to be useful by proactively addressing the wastewater crisis that plagues our community. And more importantly, to use your position to act to protect the water quality of Hood County, as is your responsibility, according to the documents I shared with you a few months ago, the Hood County Development and Compliance Rules and Regulations, Section 1, updated October 2020. Under these articles, under Article 1, Section B, 1.5B, "The Commissioners' Court of Hood County has been delegated responsibility under Texas law for overseeing the quality of water resources in the county as impacted by rapid growth and development. And these regulations are necessary to implement such authority." I won't read them all, but it goes on on the next page, Section 8. "The Commissioners' Court of Hood County has been delegated special responsibility pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 231, Subchapter K, for overseeing the protection of water resources of the county for the benefit of the county's residents and all citizens of the state, utilizing such resources for recreational purposes. And these regulations are necessary to implement such authority." Again, I won't read it all, but let me remind you that the wastewater plant that the city is proposing to put on Old Granbury Road and run it across dry ditches that they forced annexed will go down Rucker Creek, a narrow, shallow, winding creek. It would go that route for more than a mile, where it cannot be adequately assimilated, diluted, and dispersed before it reaches the flow of the Brazos. And that will cause for the entire city significant problems, as confirmed by the Commissioners when they granted a contested case hearing to those of us in opposition. Last Thursday, I went to Glen Rose for our Christmas luncheon for the Daughters of the Republic of Texas. And David and Elizabeth Crockett's great-great-great-granddaughter, whom some of you know, Carolyn Cotton, is a member of our Comanche Peak DRT chapter. She spoke about the early days of Granbury when she still lived here decades ago. And she described how Granbury was a dying town back then. The square was rundown, most of the buildings were boarded up. And then came the lake. After the dam was built, she said that Lake Granbury and Lake Granbury was created, everything changed. We became a thriving community with businesses, with tourism. And in a recent survey, when the city residents were asked what our most important asset is, they unanimously, almost unanimously, said the lake. When my husband Skip and I moved here 11 years ago because of our love of the lake, we swim, we fish, we kayak, we even sailed, if you can imagine, on Lake Granbury. And we love it here. But when the drought hit, and I believe it was 2011, 2012, we watched as tourism dried up businesses and places closed all over town. We even looked at properties and considered relocating to the Carolinas at that time. The lakes there were clean, clear, and sparkling. You could see the fish. You could even see all the way to the bottom in fairly deep water. That's how I remember the Brazos River being when I grew up canoeing on this river as a child down at El Torsoro. Lake Granbury has become noticeably murky and dirty over the last decade. You have a rare opportunity to fix that, to fix the heart and soul of our community, the lake, and you have an obligation to do so. What will your legacy be in that regard? Perhaps consider making a New Year's resolution toward the aim of making a real difference on behalf of your constituents, yourselves, your family, and future generations. And we hope that you will consider using some of the COVID relief money, if not all of it, still coming toward the aim of wastewater construction, which is permitted under that funding source. Thank you so much, and again, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, you laugh, you say it looks fun, but I don't recommend this. So what you have to go through. Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. So I just want to give a brief update of state of the JP offices for the Tyler transfer. And, you know, we didn't know what we were getting into, the JP offices. But this is not simply a software change, like if you bought a new computer and you got Microsoft Office, right? You install it, start using this. We are having, and when I say we are clerks, and next time you consider the salaries, our clerks need to be court administrators like the county court at law judge and district court have, because they are working their tails off. So we're having to build, design, create our system. And so if I came to four Commissioners and I said, "I want each and every one of y'all to do the same thing, same paperwork, same forms," you'd look at me like I had two heads. Well, that's essentially four JPs. We are four different elected officials. We all do things differently. And trying to design one single program, which we're doing for Tyler, what we're doing for Tyler is building a JP program. It's, you gentlemen bought us a new vehicle, and they shipped us the box of parts, but in that box is a motorcycle, a car, and a pickup truck. But we need to build it with little instruction and how we want it to run. I now know that we can file murder charges in JP court. No, we can't. But that stuff is on Tyler that our clerks are having to weed through, pick out, submit forms, download forms to what we're going to use, what works best for us. And they keep saying for specifically JPs, but there's four different offices. We are not one office. So the atmosphere is tumultuous at best. Our clerks are, it's frustrating, because they're asked to do something, pass and fail programs that they're given, and they don't know what this, what it is they're doing. Well, how can they work something they don't know what they're supposed to be doing? It's, I invite you, we've had a couple of Commissioners come by my office, but I invite the rest of you, because you put this on our staff unnecessarily. We didn't need it, didn't want it, but now you should see what they're going through. We've had to close our office several days, because all the clerks had to get together and go over forms we got from the Justice Center to download to Tyler to pick which one form we want to use. But we use different forms. There's four different judges, four different personalities, four different codes and prices and fees. We're not all the same. But Tyler's kind of making us do it all the same. Well, it's, you know, that's, it's not going to work that way. We're four individual courts. And so I invite you to come by and talk to the clerks. We're having to put this all together. And Tyler is, they're doing great. Mr. Griggs is doing a wonderful job. I mean, he's nice, he's friendly, and he keeps saying, "Stick with it, you can do it, stick with, you can do it." But it's very difficult to have to build the program. Our clerks, our SMEs, our subject matter experts, they're working for Tyler. I thought Tyler would come in and bring this great JP program, and wow, look at this, it works like Microsoft Office. No, no, no. We're having to build and create our own program for Tyler. And I have several instances, oh, I've got a folder full of them. Our office was completely shut down and couldn't work and train for Tyler because they found a glitch in their system. Our clerks found a glitch in the Tyler system, didn't work, had to shut down. We couldn't train. They will schedule an appointment, like last Monday, we had a scheduled meeting for all the JP offices, and they canceled it, moved it to Tuesday. Well, wait, we have court, we have meetings, we have hearings scheduled for that day, so we either give up Tyler or we put our court on hold. And so it's a very difficult process. When they said this would be a difficult transition, that was an understatement. So please come by, because, and talk to our clerks, the SMEs, of how difficult this really is. And it's, I wouldn't want to come to work knowing I was going to have to face this all day. And it's tough. We have to apologize. I apologize every day to my clerks and the rest of clerks, and I'm sorry you're having to go through this. Supposedly, it's going to be a good system, and it will work out, but I just want y'all to know, it's a lot more difficult than any of us actually knew. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay. That's all the comments at large we have, so now we come up to the consent agenda. Does any of the committee members discuss anything on the consent agenda?
Judge, I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. The next caller of business is Rosen Platts, Mr. Donald Lenny. Good morning, Mr. Lenny.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. The first thing that we have is the roadways in Rolling Hills. Commissioner Andrews has received a petition for these two roadways that are on the agenda. They are Gustine Court from Deleon Drive to the cul-de-sac at 445 feet, and Heiko Court from Indian Gap Street to the cul-de-sac at 360 feet. Total, these are about a tenth and a half in mileage. Commissioner Andrews and I had looked at these roads and assessed them, and road operations recommends accepting these two roadways onto the county road system.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion that the county adopts Gustine Court and Heiko Court into the road system.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews that the county accept Justine Court and Heiko Court as stated in the minutes here into the county road system, seconded by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. What else do you have?
The second agenda item, we're asking the court if they'll table this until the December 28th meeting. What has happened, the dynamics of this project agreement has caused us to go to a different forum. So actually, we're waiting for the school district to sign this agreement before I bring it back to court on the 28th.
Do I hear a corporate motion to table this?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to table item B there.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to table a request like that within the school district's will of action. Any further... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero to table until the December 28th, Commissioners' Court meeting.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Mr. Lenny, head.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. First thing I have today is a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Orchard 14, lots 3476R1 and 3476R2 in precinct 2.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to convene into a public hearing at his presidency 9:26 a.m.
This replat is a subdivision of Lot 3476R and Orchard 14, creating a 0.949 of an acre lot called Lot 3476R1, and a 1.507 lot called Lot 3476R2. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 2 and is served by AMUD Water and will be served by an onsite wastewater system. Staff has reviewed this replat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat, Orchard 14, Lot 3476R1, 3476R2 as presented.
Any questions or comments? If not, we'll reconvene back into Commissioners' Court. Now, do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the replat of Orchard 14, lots 3476R1 and 3476R2.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the replat of Orchard 14, as stated therein, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Next, we had a public hearing to discuss and consider a replat of Hunterwood Edition, lots 15R1 and 15R2 in Block 5 in precinct 2. But the owner has requested a 30-day continuance because of the local government code they're allowed their 30-day, one 30-day continuance, so we don't have to act on it within the 30 days, the time clock. So they want to continue it until January 11th, 2022.
Yeah, I guess we need to...
I wanted to try this, and I'll make the motion to allow a continuance for the replat of Hunterwood, lots 15R1 and 15R2. What's, do we need a date on that?
January 11th, 2022.
Continues until January 11th, 2022.
Do I hear a second? Commissioner Cotton?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor of resetting till January, or continues until January 11, 2022 for the replat of Hunterwood Edition, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Third item I have is a preliminary plat of Sunset Ridge in precinct 4. The preliminary plat is located at 5500 Monroe Highway, Granbury, or Crescent, Texas, proposes to create six single-family lots. This preliminary plat is located in the Road Corridor District in precinct 4 and will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. Preliminary plat proposes to create 722.82 linear feet of asphalt streets. The largest lot is 2.47 acres and the smallest is 2.18 acres. There's a variance associated with this preliminary plat that has to be approved prior to approving the preliminary plat or simultaneously, as long as the motion approves the variance first. The variance is to Section 2 subdivision regulations 8.5 fire protection that requires a development without central water system consisting of five or more dwelling units with a suitable lake or pond access. Fire Department approved all-weather surface road to a lake or pond. Being that it only has six lots, staff, and there are ponds available in the area, staff has no objection to this variance. There's also another variance that needs to be granted that development did not request the owner to ask for, but it is something that the county has not done in the past and hopefully will be fixed in the revisions of the regulations. I take full responsibility and just want to be transparent and have it out in open. The regulation is to Section 2 subdivision regulations 6.2 concerning roadway layout. Describes the Hood County master thoroughfare plan, and the owner would be responsible for dedicating half the right-of-way indicated on that plan for TextDOT for FM 3450 Monroe Highway. The right-of-way as it is today is 100 foot wide, and this owner would have to dedicate or give away 10 foot of land according to that regulation. When TextDOT does an expansion, they acquire right-of-way, acquisition, and obtain a deed to the land under all TextDOT roads. A dedication on the plat does not give TextDOT title to the land, and if this highway was to be widened, TextDOT would be acquiring right-of-way from the adjacent properties that this owner would be made to give away according to this regulation. Our engineer reviewing commented on this regulation, requesting the owner to dedicate the 10 feet of land, which the county has not done in the past. I just wanted to be transparent and let you know, development supports this variance on this regulation. The development requires a 50-foot building line on all TextDOT roads. The reason is to protect structures should TextDOT ever expand from that expansion. If the court chooses to grant these variances, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat as presented.
Judge, members of the commission, my name is Chuck Stark with Barron Stark Engineers. I'm the surveyor slash engineer for this project. I have no presentation for you, but I wanted to be here to address any questions you might have.
Do I understand you right that you want to approve both these variances?
Staff recommends...
Recommend, yeah.
Staff recommends...
Okay. Well, do I hear a motion?
There any other speakers?
I thought there were three.
Just one?
Okay, sorry.
Gotcha, okay. All right. Okay, so I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Sunset Ridge out in Crescent, subject to the variance language being worked out correctly. The variance is approved? And to approve the variances as noted.
A motion is made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the variances as stated and to approve the preliminary plat. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Aye. Seconded by both Commissioner Andrews and Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
My next agenda item requires no action. Development just wants to read it into record that the construction plans for South Bend Edition have been reviewed by the staff and engineer, and all comments have been addressed and been approved prior presenting to the next agenda item. The next agenda item, we have the developer's letter of agreement, the performance bond and maintenance bond, and the final plat of South Bend Edition to discuss and consider. The concept plan for this final plat was approved at the November 24th, 2020 Commissioners' Court. The preliminary plat was approved on July 27th, 2021. This property is located at 6316 G Road, Granbury, Texas. The gross side area for this final plat is 79.14 acres of the GT Walter survey, abstract 594, the Nancy Dotson survey, abstract 151. It proposes to create 53 single-family lots, one HOA lot, and one gas well lot. This final plat is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3 and will be served by AMUD Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. This final plat proposes to construct 5308 linear feet of public 6-inch concrete streets. There are no variances associated with this final plat. Staff has reviewed the final plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends accepting the developer's letter of agreement, the performance and maintenance bonds, and approval of the final plat of South Bend Edition as presented.
Any questions regarding the South Bend Edition? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move that we, you know, approve the developer's letter of agreement, performance bond, and maintenance bond, and the final plat of South Bend Edition.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the developer's letter of agreement, performance bond, maintenance bond, and final plat of South Bend Edition, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further comment or question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Kidd. Finances, Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. For this court, you've been given information regarding expenditures and invoices. You've also received a spreadsheet for payments over $10,000. This court's expenditures are $690,037.84. Does anyone have any questions regarding these invoices?
Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody want to pay the bills for the county?
I'll make the motion to pay the bills in the amount of $690,037.84.
Second. Okay. A motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the payment of the bills as stated there, again, seconded by both Commissioner Andrews and Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
That was easy. Thank you all.
That was quick, but we missed you at the juvenile court. Did you? You said that you were... You said that you were most familiar with the detention facility.
That's right, because I feel all of you out of there.
Okay, all right. This brings us now to the miscellaneous agenda. And I was informed this morning by Mr. Webster and Dr. Mox that item number one was to be pulled from a docket, that they are working out the paperwork on this, so item number one is pulled from the docket. So that brings us to item number two, is to discuss and take appropriate action to rename the Hood County Justice Center, the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center. And we have people, speakers, and notoriety here that wish to address this. So this is the Justice Center writer that we're all familiar with, is known as the Hood County Justice Center. And people have come to, to. I assume your husband will get it back, Barbara Sutton?
Yes.
Here he is, right here. Here's the man of the hour. You're a number one speaker to discuss your position on renaming the Hood County Justice Center, the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center. Mr. Rob Sutton.
Thank you, Judge.
Also president of the Sons of the Republic of Texas.
Thank you again. Thank you, Commissioners. It's good to be with you this morning. I'd like to start out with a few words from Judge Walton. In a prepared statement to the Hood County News, Walton stated, "It has been my privilege and what I've always considered a great honor and solemn responsibility to serve the people of Hood County as district judge for over twenty-seven years. While sitting as district judge, it has always been my mission to serve the people of Hood County with diligence and justice and with the utmost fairness to all persons who appeared in my court. I have concluded that the fine people of Hood County deserve to have someone serving them as district judge without the health issues I will potentially face in the days to come. Although I am retiring from the bench, I'm not retiring from life. And I will continue to serve our community in whatever capacities are available to me." Ralph and Patsy have lived in Granberry for forty-seven years. And a lot of the folks in this room have known them for those forty-seven years. Ralph has served in the legal profession forty-eight years, twenty-one of those years in private practice and twenty-seven, served the three hundred and fifty-fifth District Court and the citizens of Hood County as the district judge. One thing you may not know about Ralph, he has a great sense of humor, just not in the courtroom. He takes his profession very seriously. I like to say that Ralph is loved by women and children, respected by men, and feared by criminals and lawyers. You see, Judge Walton believes that every defendant is due the very best representation possible. And he does not cut any lawyers, any slack that do not understand and practice that truism, one of the fundamental planks of our liberty. Barbara and I have known the Walton family for twenty-six years. We're rookies in this community. We didn't move here until nineteen ninety-three. I know Ralph to be a dedicated follower of Jesus Christ, an exemplary son, brother, husband, father, and a true and loyal friend. He loves God, his family, the great state of Texas, the great United States, the Constitution of the United States, and Texas, the rule of law, his staff that served with him in the three hundred and fifty-fifth, and the citizens of his beloved Granberry and Hood County. Oh, I better add Baylor University. The Senate of Texas resolved that the Senate of the State of Texas, Eighty-seventh Legislature, hereby communes Ralph H. Walton Jr. on his exemplary career and his many contributions to his community and the state, and extend to him best wishes for the future. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be prepared for him as an expression of esteem from the Senate of the great state of Texas. One from the left out of that revolution, Ralph's very favorite thing is to preside over adoption proceedings in his court. His very favorite. Honorable Judge and honorable Commissioners, a humble request as a citizen of Hood County and beneficiary of living in a safe community due in large part to Judge Walton, that the Hood County Commissioner's Center be renamed the Honorable H. Ralph H. Walton Justice Center. My request is not only to honor a person who has served our community and district court with unquestioned diligence and integrity, but moreover, to recognize a hero and role model for the citizens and especially the children of Hood County. The Ralph H. Walton Justice Center will serve as proof and inspiration for our young people that with hard work, preparation, and commitment, they can accomplish great things. Thank you very much for your consideration for this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Thank you. Well, we also have another speaker here. She is not a rookie to this community, and I don't think you are either, Mr. Sutton, but it's royalty here. This is Miss Jean Kate, the first being queen and also a second being queen.
That tells you how old I am. Your Honor, Commissioners, for fifteen years, I served as the program director of the CASA program, court-appointed special advocates for children, and I was in Judge Walton's court weekly. Sometimes he didn't rule quite the way I would have liked, but his courtroom was always the epitome of decorum, justice, and honesty. And he had an incredible love for the children whose cases he served. And I would like to add my request that we do rename the Justice Center the Ralph Walton Justice Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kidd. Is there, is that all the speakers that have?
I think that's all ahead.
That's all. Okay. So after hearing these two fine people here make these comments, and I think most everybody in this room know Ralph Walton's contribution, and I think it's a very good motion. In fact, I make the motion that the Commissioners' Court rename the Justice Center of Hood County the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Judge Massengill to rename the Hood County Justice Center the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say aye. Motion is unanimously passed. By the way, this suggestion has been brought by Mr. Sutton to me after talking, and we talked to a number of citizens, and a bunch of citizens really wanted to do this. And so I'm glad that everybody else agrees too. So thank you very much. You're no longer a rookie in Hood County. And so thank you, my queen, for coming down here. So, all right, thank you very much. Now we have our favorite librarian, Jennifer Lawston, here to discuss, uh, for approval of the revisions and additions to the Hood County Library policy as proposed by the Hood County Librarian, Jennifer Lawston. I just wanted to say that since Ms. Lawston has come down as our librarian, our library has functioned so well, and I haven't heard one complaint about anything, about anything. So I really do like this lady. She's doing some fabulous job. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I have gone through some of the policies at the library that were written, I think, back in twenty fifteen. There's been some additions. And there are a few things we wanted to change and update and kind of reword because some of it was wordy and we wanted to be clear so that anybody can kind of understand them. So I've already spoken with all of you about those changes and presented them, and I can go through them quickly here if I need to. And so the first change that we made, at the beginning of the policy is listed all of the ALA, which is American Library Association Bill of Rights, and the Texas Constitution and the U.S. Constitution, freedom of speech. We left those articles in, but we just put a link, oops, we removed all of the long list of ALA. We're not removing them because we're not going to abide by them. We just put the link in so that it doesn't take up so much space and it, people don't get bogged down in that. And also, we added an ADA compliance code that was not listed in our policy originally, and I feel like we need to make sure that's listed, as well as copyright. Copyright was not listed in our original policy, which the library is a big proponent of copyright laws, and so we need to have that listed as well. We have different account types that people can sign up for, which is a regular account, a temporary account, a non-resident account, which just depends on where you live, what services and things you can have access to. But another account we'd like to add is a teen account. Right now, anybody under the age of eighteen has to have a parent with them to sign them up for a library card. And I really feel that if someone is old enough to get a driver's license at sixteen, they should be old enough to get a library card on their own. But with some restrictions, that they only check out, you know, three items at a time instead of ten or twenty so that they're not racking up a bill that they may not be able to pay later. So I would like to do that because we do get teens in that can't get their parents in, and they want to have access to books and things at the library. And I really feel like that is our job to provide that for them. Also, in our, in order to get a library card, you have to have a government-issued ID, and you have to be able to prove residency in Hood County so that you can have access to all things. In our previous policy, it states you have to have a piece, you have to have a proof of residency, and it had gotten to where they were asking for a piece of mail. But I want to put in there that you can provide digital proof. Not everybody gets everything in the mail anymore. And if they can provide digital proof of their name and address that goes with their driver's license, that's a change I'd like to make as well. For the teen account, since they have to also prove residency, they have to have a driver's license plus a student ID or a paycheck stub or something proving that they live here and go to school here so that they can get an account. Right now, when you check out items at the library, you have two weeks, and I'd like to extend that to three weeks. A lot of times, people take out several things. Our online items go out for three weeks at a time, and I would like to go ahead and do everything else for three weeks at a time. Also, right now, our limit is no more than twenty items per account checked out at one time ever since COVID, and we've had to been sanitizing everything that comes in. We've been only doing ten, and so I want to, I want to put that in there, that we, we can change that due to circumstances. Let's see. For tech share cards, right now, we say you have to have a good standing account with Hood County for six months, and I want to reduce that to three months. I think that we can issue tech share cards based on that so that people can access things at other libraries. The statement of library conduct, we just reworded it and clarified for patrons. There's one thing that we didn't have in the current policy, which is a health and safety. And it says, "For the health and safety of patrons and staff, the following rules should be followed. Refrain from borrowing library materials when having an illness that is contagious," which sometimes that's not, you don't know that you are, but if you know that you're coughing and sick and, you know, stay home. Patrons may be asked to leave the library if they have an unprotected open wound, they have a loud persistent cough, they have poor hygiene. That becomes an issue sometimes where it's noticeable to other patrons. Library materials returned with the following may result in temporarily barring a patron, bedbugs, which we do get books back with bedbugs, bed, booklice, roaches, fleas, animals, pet, or human excrement, which does happen. We get books back and that's those conditions. And when it was a repeat over and over, we'd like to say, look, you know, respectfully and quietly, you know, we need you to clean up a little bit before you keep bringing books back. Let's see. The child policy, we used to say that anybody could come into the library as long as they were with someone that's fifteen or older, but I've changed that to eighteen and older if you're going to bring other kiddos in. But I've also put in here that children birth, from birth to seven, they need to be in the vicinity, immediate vicinity of their caregiver. A lot of times, parents want to come in and sit at the computer, let their kids go to the kids' room on their own, but that can sometimes create safety issues. We can't babysit and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing while the parent's at the computer. So we've kind of given some better guidelines on what age groups can kind of roam on the library on their own and which need to be with their parent. Let's see. And I think that's just about it. The only other thing is that the challenge materials due, due to the, us disbanding the library advisory board, we needed to reword challenge materials. The only thing that changed there is the request for reconsideration is the same. They'll submit it to the library director, and I'll take it under consideration and, and come to you or people for advisement before making a decision and get back with them within thirty days. And that's all the policy changes I have.
I think that you came by, I know you're talking today, I think you're talking to the other commissioners, you know, about these proposed changes.
Yes.
I think they're very sensible, very common sense of, and really in work, so I'm very in favor. We have one speaker on this, Dr. Harold Rannick. Did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I'm going to cheat and do three items at once, but very briefly, well, due to the diligence of Jennifer, she showed good judgment and, and progress in the library. I think we support this, and I'm going to save the court time that on items fifteen and nineteen, those are items that also improve the ever-improving library as member of the Library Foundation Board. I think we should support Jennifer in these items. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion for the Hood County Library?
Hey, Judge?
Yes.
Got one little thing. I really appreciate Jennifer coming in and speaking to all of us when she's been kind of giving us a heads up. It's very refreshing to have someone who's willing to do that, and so we kind of know what's coming. I really don't like getting ambushed out here with an agenda item, so I really appreciate Jennifer with the work she's done, and I really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the revisions and additions to the Hood County Library policy as presented by the librarian, Jennifer Logston.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the revisions and additions to the Hood County Library Policy as proposed by the librarian, Jennifer Logston, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the great job you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to accept the executed interlocal cooperation agreement, multi-county adult sexual assault response team. This is an agreement, Sheriff, that we all worked out and we approved. This is just making a motion for the Commissioners' Court to go ahead and accept the executed contract, correct? Executed.
Correct. And multi-county would be in to include Summerville County in this.
That's right.
Yes.
Include Summerville County as our sponsor.
We'll all work together.
So do I hear an appropriate motion?
Move that we accept the executed interlocal cooperation agreement, multi-county adult sexual assault response team as written.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner Wilson to accept the interlocal cooperation agreement in State area, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further comment or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action on request to approve and authorize a county judge to sign the correctional dental service agreement. Sheriff.
Judge Commissioners, this is just a standard form that we've had for a number of years since we've been using this dentist. We used to go outside, into the community with these people and we had a, one time where they tried to escape. So, this is a great thing. He comes into the jail, so it saves on security and extra manpower. He did go up on his cost to $1,500 and we had a couple of other little corrections on this dental service agreement, but everything was worked out. County Attorney looked at it and it's a great asset having him able to come into the, to the jail to do, do the work for these inmates.
Good. Mr. Mills, you have approved this agreement?
Yes, sir. There was, Sheriff, you got the slight little changed version to them from yesterday that Eric did?
Yep.
Okay. It was weird, but in the last few years, there was a little portion of it that said that we would pay on the 45th day of the month and that never got fixed and it always looked weird. I mean, we never had a problem paying, but it just was in there and it annoyed me. So, anyway, he, he got that kind of changed yesterday just because it was bothering me. But other than that, I mean, it looked good. I went over several details with the sheriff. I think we're good.
Yeah, it's, section 5.3 is what got modified. The dentist didn't think there was any problems with it, but the bill's been getting paid and there isn't any problems. But we adjusted it, so everybody's happy.
Good. Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make the motion to approve and authorize county judge Ron Massengill to sign the correctional dental services agreement as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Motion is made by Engel to authorize county judge to sign the correctional dental service agreement, second by Commissioner Andrews. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Sheriff. All right. Item number six, Ms. Melissa Welber.
Good morning, Court. Hood County offers optional plans through Nationwide to our employees. All plans are optional and so, back in November, Will Angus, who is a representative for Nationwide, came to me and said they have implemented two more plans that they'd like to offer to our employees and I think it would be a good benefit for our employees. So, he is here today to enlighten you on what each one of the new plans offers and it does require court approval for us to be able to offer these to our employees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioners and Judge. My name again is Will Angus, A-N-G-U-S. I've been with Nationwide here for just about six years now, but I've been in this industry for almost 30 years in financial planning and analysts and helping people get ready for retirement. So, love working for Nationwide and it's been a great partnership here so far. I just took over the territory with Hood County about second quarter of this year, so we're, we're making some great strides. Again, this is a supplemental plan to the pension, to the TCDRS. This is a plan where you get to decide how much you want to put in, how you want to invest the assets and then when you leave the county, this is basically your emergency slash play account that when you need money over and beyond your pension checks, you have a fund that you can get into however you want to, whenever you want to. So, again, a big part of your retirement plan. And the thing that I was wanting to go over today, there are two different options that were, again, new to Nationwide. The first one is a Roth option. So, in the past, this has all been pre-tax money. So, whenever you put the money into the 457B, it is pre-tax, it's taking it off of your taxable income. So, it gives you that tax break right now. Whenever you take the money out, you have to add that money to your ordinary tax and pay your taxes on it at that point. So, again, great benefit now, but in, in the future, you are going to have to pay your taxes on it. Your pension is taxable as well, so you've got a lot of pre-tax money coming to you in retirement. So, the Roth option within 457B is a relatively new animal, but basically, you can take advantage of the Roth option of paying your taxes now, but as long as you keep that money in there for at least five years or longer, you do not have to pay taxes on the growth of your money. It's the only animal out there besides municipal bonds that you do not either have to pay taxes on your growth or capital gains on your growth. So, it is a huge benefit, especially for young people, because you get money into the Roth here and you work 20, 25 years, you've got all of that gain there that you do not have to pay taxes on. So, to try to get new, these millennials, these younger people that are really looking in the future about their tax consequences, give them another option to be able to get into this plan and take advantage of the Roth. Any, any questions on that part of it there?
So, is it a separate account? You just...
It's all, it's all record kept under one account. So, when you go in to look at your account, you'll see one balance, but once you dig down one level, you'll see pre-tax money and Roth money if you have both in there. So, whenever it comes time to take money out, you can be strategic about how you take your money out as well. Some years, you, you have tax consequences and you don't want to add new taxes onto your, your, your income and so you take money out of the Roth. Some years, you're, you're fine, no, no extra tax benefits, so we can go ahead and take money out of the, the pre-tax. So, it allows you to be a little bit more strategic. But to answer your question, everything's under one plan. You just basically get with Melissa here and, and let her know, hey, we want to do some Roth contribution as well as or in place of your pre-tax. Anything else on that? Okay. The second option again is our index principal protection annuity. It's called an annuity, but it is a group plan annuity. So, this is just another investment option within the plan. About a year and a half ago, we came to Melissa and, and to the Hood County and the fixed account, the floor was, is being reduced on the fixed account. So, it was at three and a half percent. That is being reduced a little bit every quarter. We just basically could not afford to keep the fixed account at three and a half percent in, in today's interest rate environments with the Fed having interest rates at zero. So, we just were not able to do that. So, that one is slowly going down. So, we had a lot of people asking for another option and what we've come up with is, is indexed principal protection program. So, in a sense, it works a lot like a CD does. It's a year commitment. Once you put money into the account, the money needs to stay in there for a year, but it is based on the S and P 500 returns. So, you have no downside risk. If the S and P goes down for the year, you basically are at zero. You do not lose any kind of principal. If the S and P goes up, you, you're able to take advantage of that upturn of the S and P 500, up to a cap whenever you start your contribution. So, let's take an example of right now, if you were to put money in this plan, a lump sum, let's say $100,000 into this. On January 1, it would start into this year-long commitment. The cap starting in January 1 is nine and a half percent. So, if the S and P 500 makes nine and a half percent next year, you get nine and a half percent. If it makes 5%, you get 5%. If the S and P goes down 10%, you do not lose principal, but you do not get any returns either, basically. If the S and P makes 13%, you make nine and a half percent because nine and a half is the cap on that. So, it's really for that person that wants to keep their money into the plan, wants to be conservative, but wants to be able to take advantage of market upturn without any kind of downside risk. There is no additional charge on either one of these to the county. This is just a, a program that we offer, another option to make your plan better for your employees and have, have more choices for them. Trying to think, there, there are no restrictions in getting the money out of the index principal protection program. So, let's say that $100,000 you put in there in January and, and come around, you know, April, you had an emergency and you needed to get some of that money out. You can get that money out, but you're not going to get any interest, you're not losing any money, but you're not getting any interest on whatever you pull out of there before the year is up. Okay? What questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yes, yes. And again, I will, Melissa has all my information. I would love to meet with any of you individually if you have questions on the plan or you have a plan of your own that you need help with. Again, that's what I'm here for. So, again, I appreciate your time. Any other questions? Any other concerns?
So, what are we supposed to do here? What's...
You can just, it's basically an approval. We have a, a form that, that I think if you want to, I believe Melissa can sign off on it, but I think what she's needing is your approval for her to be able to sign off on both of the options.
Allow an employee to voluntary participate?
Correct.
Should they choose?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. All right.
Do I hear an appropriate motion to allow Hood County employees to participate in the optional indexed principal protection or the Roth 457?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to allow Hood County employees to participate in optional Nationwide indexed principal protection annuity or a Roth 457B.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in agreement say aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, aye. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you gentlemen very much. Thank you and I look forward to continue to work with you and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number seven, Commissioner take appropriate action on roofing projects at the Hood County Law Enforcement Center, Hood County Justice Center, adult probation and juvenile probation building, the Honorable Dave...
Honorable.
Welcome, Mr. Wright.
I've got a lot of help on this one, so, as you know, from the information we gave you, we had all the roofs in the county evaluated to look and see the state of the roof. And what it was, we've got a lot of hail damage. The main one, the jail, the law enforcement center, were able to get an insurance payment of 406, 394, 81 on that. The bid that we have for the roof, for an overlay, so basically what that is, is we'll lay over the existing roof. It's not that bad, but it is leaking in places. So, we can put a roof over the top of that for roughly 455, 091. Now, if we rip that roof off, we'll have to bring it up to code with the city and that's going to be a substantial amount. That would be 681, 774 on that roof. So, the difference in that and what the insurance payment is, 275. Now, talking with the roofer, and I brought him here today with me, Jonathan, everybody seems to think the roof over will be just fine on that. That'll give us a, a good roof, 20 years, we should be good. The other one that I have on here...
Back on that one there, are you saying that's a, it's a 20-year roof for just the overlay?
Yes.
And a 20-year roof if we replace? So, it's the same?
I believe it's about the same. Let me look it up real quick. And Jonathan, if you'd like to come up, I'll let you explain that.
I believe the overlay is only 15.
Oh, it's 15 on the overlay.
Okay. Right on, make sure. Okay.
Right.
So, how does that work? Tell us the, the difference. What do we gain by spending $200,000 more?
More insulation, better R-value, keep the temperature in the jail down.
We don't want the inmates getting warm, huh? I understand that.
That's basically about it.
Okay.
Then we also, we're looking at the adult probation and the juvenile probation. Both of those roofs are our panel roofs. They've been on there since those buildings were built. I don't have any documentation on them. I'm having leaks at the adult probation on the west side, starting to migrate into the building. Juvenile, we're lucky, we haven't had any leaks. A lot of the screws are gone out of the roof and it looked like somebody's tried to coat it with something at one point. Those two roofs are, are going to basically be a wash on insurance versus the price of the job. Now, on the adult probation, we actually come out weather well on it. So, the bid on it was about $8,000 under the insurance. Now, the one building that I asked for as well, and there's no real insurance money on that, that's on the Justice Center. We're 15 years into a 20-year roof. It's showing signs of wear, but it's not leaking. There's nothing wrong with this roof right now. We can coat that with an acrylic coating and it's a white acrylic coating, so the only thing we would gain by doing that would be we'd get a little bit of a reflect, it would be energy savings, so to speak, but that would cost us $108,436 out of, out of the county. So, I put that in there because the roof is showing signs of wear and it is starting to get bad. We're 15 years into a 20-year roof. We may not want to do anything or we may want to try to preserve it for another 10 years.
I think Becky wants to speak.
Yes, sir. We are doing the 5% property tax revenue into Fund 55. I do it every couple of months. I'm about to move in enough to bring our unallocated balance to 1.647 million. So, whatever you need to do to get us moving toward the future, I hope that you gentlemen recommend because we're okay here.
And, and that's why this roof is in there. It's losing a lot of granules on it. It's starting to turn black in places where the granules are gone. I mean, I know we're still good on the insurance, but I was just more or less trying to be a little bit more proactive, maybe extend the life of the roof 10 years above what we've got right now. But, you know...
On your spreadsheet, so if we did items one, three, four and five, that'd be all the buildings and taking the overlay option, is that 721,000? Is that what you're talking about, the cost of the county on your spreadsheet?
One, three, four and five would be law enforcement center, the jail.
Right.
Adult probation, juvenile probation and the Justice Center.
A total of 721,000, right?
That would be the price, yes.
And you're saying you, you'd have...
I didn't know that much.
But, we've got insurance coverage on one, three and four.
So, what's the difference?
Well, I thought that was calculated in there.
No. Doing, doing one, three, four, my understanding of that is after the recoverable depreciation, we come out at a wash, replacing, well, doing the overlay at the LEC.
Doing the overlay, right.
And then replacing adult, juvenile probation is, is zeroed out. So, I mean...
So, you're looking at is maybe the difference in the jail roof in this, in this building, correct? That's around $300,000?
And that's $108,000. And me personally, I live in Texas, we're going to get another hailstorm. I don't replace roofs until they, you know, until they need to be insurance-based for it and all that stuff. So, I'm, I wouldn't want to do the, this one yet.
My main idea on that, that particular item number five was to let everybody know we're approaching and that, that was my main reason for doing it.
Right now, it's not leaking?
No, sir.
I don't have any problems with it at, at the moment?
No.
Here at the Justice Center?
We had one little small leak up in the front and it was actually in the face of the building. It was worth some caulking. It went away. Jonathan was paragone, they've already repaired that. We don't think it's leaking anymore. It was over at the, and what... It was over at the, and time will tell, as we get more rain, but that would be in Matt Mills' space on the other end of the building, so he was getting wet over there, so I had to fix that. But, I mean, if there's any questions on the roofs, any question on the types, anything, you know, we've got the folks here for it today. And it's a lighter colored roof than what's currently on there.
That's one of the concerns that I would have, would be, you know, get something lighter to, you know, for a reflection, you know, off of that. Having been, I was on the roof of the jail Friday. I can assure you, the county got their money's worth out of that roof.
Yes, sir, they did. We did well.
You know, for something that was built in ninety-five, it is still, you know, it's starting to show some wear, and there's no question about that. It's starting to, you know, there's leaks, a lot of them are at the seams, and, you know, those, you know, need to be fixed.
And we will be changing all the skylights out there, like an acrylic skylight that's up there. They're starting to show wear, crack, and that's part of the deal. We're going to change those out. So we're trying, the roof over, I think, is a pretty good idea. I know that that'll give us the opportunity to have a little bit better barrier, and I know there's some other concerns, but Jonathan and I have had the discussions, it's not going to leak when they get done.
Judge, I'll make a motion that we do the roof overlay on the law enforcement center and then replace the adult probation and juvenile probation roofs.
Second, Dan.
Okay. Do I hear a motion by Commissioner Andrews? Roof overlay on the law enforcement center and adult probation, juvenile probation. Do I hear replacement? Replacement. And second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Item number eight, Commissioner take appropriate action to approve the TCDRS plan agreement for plan year twenty twenty-two. Again, this call.
Yes, good morning again. You received a sheet that looked like the current and proposed plan year. This is something that has to be certified by tomorrow with TCDRS. This is our twenty twenty-two plan. I just want to draw your attention to the first three areas that where it shows current plan and plan twenty twenty-one, it actually says eleven twelve. That's for twenty twenty-two. You can see that there are no changes in that, in our current plan and what we're proposing next year for twenty twenty-two. Because of the contributions that the court has approved this year towards the retirement plan, which you will see that in number four, down there, that very last number, two million thirty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-seven, we were able to get our total contribution rate to eleven point oh two, which was considered during the budget process this year.
Good job, Ms. Kidd.
Yes, we're all very grateful as employees for our retirement plan.
Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I approve, I move that we approve the TCDRS plan agreement for plan year twenty twenty-two.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
You got three.
Okay. First on that subject. Do I hear Commissioner Wilson approve the TCDRS plan agreement for plan year twenty twenty-two and try, not gonna put it up on the other three commissioners. So, any further discussion? All those in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five...
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next is item number nine, to discuss and take appropriate action to adjust the cutoff date for the agenda items for Commissioner's court due for December the twenty-eighth to be submitted no later than five P.M. Tuesday, December the twenty-first. That's because of the way the Christmas comes up instead of by noon on Wednesday preceding the Tuesday's court, that you get everything in by five P.M. on Tuesday. Of course, there's a second agenda item, which is item ten, that needs to be considered also, is that all invoices and line item transfers that need to be submitted to the auditor no later than noon Tuesday, December the twenty-first, so that the auditor can then get them to us by five P.M. on Tuesday, December the twenty-first. So all the department heads, please understand that we're doing this because of the holidays and the way that the days all fall, so that we can get the proper agenda out, so, do I hear a motion?
I'd like to also, and just to say that even though that's part of it, that you get it in by five o'clock, and besides that, the judge is going to be gone that next week, I'll be running the court, so I ask you to keep stuff off the agenda, please.
I love it.
So I'll make the motion, then Judge, to change the cutoff date to five P.M. on Tuesday for items on the agenda, and then also on number ten, that the invoices be given to the auditor no later than noon on Tuesday, December twenty-first.
Second. Motion made in second to adjust the cutoff date for the agenda items and invoices line transfers to the auditor. Any further discussion?
Well, this is my chance, Judge.
Okay.
Go ahead. Call the vote.
Okay. No other comments or questions, then. So all those in favor of nine and ten, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Again, unanimously, five zero. So we, please, make sure of these adjustments so that we can have the proper agenda for December the twenty-eighth. Thank you all. Okay. Item number eleven, discuss and take appropriate action to execute the revised lease with addendum regarding the property.
I know you didn't expect to see me, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what the addendum is, but I wanted to let you know that I am having issues with payment from these people. Reached out to them several times. The last payment that we received was October fourth. That was for September.
This is on that, on that building, on Pelican?
Right. That was for September. We've had September payment, we've had October payment. Both have been short because of the previous contract, so they're behind three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And then they've yet to pay November and December, which they keep going back and forth why we haven't sent invoices, and we've never sent an invoice since I began. So I keep reminding them, we have a contract, I've sent the contract, and they're still going back and forth with me. So just to let you know that we are having issues with payment at this time, I will continue to stay on them so we can get it resolved, but as of right now, they are pretty far behind.
Our recourse, eviction?
You tell me, I don't know...
They don't pay the bill.
I don't know what the addendum says, so I don't...
That's what we need to do, just sell it.
We've not, since I've been in office, we have not, we've maybe had maybe once, maybe three times where we've actually had to reach out to them and ask for payment. They've always been quick to send a payment, but this time is the first time they've actually, like, been throwing it off. So we've been calling, we've had to reach supervisors, and, you know, we'll do everything we can to try to get payment, and I'll keep you updated on that, just to let you know.
Just be polite. Mr. Mills, yeah, that's exactly right.
So you let me know what I need to do.
Very dissatisfied with that payment schedule, and Mr. Mills may be exercising our wipes under the leaves. If I address Mr. Mills?
Is there...
Okay, all right. So do I still hear a motion to take appropriate action to execute the revised lease with the addendum regarding the property? Or to not execute it, I guess? What do you think, Mr. Mills, in view of this...
I thought we already did.
I thought we already did this.
I thought we did it already.
Yeah, y'all, y'all voted on the new lease with the higher payments. I don't know what, how this got on the agenda or what the addendum is.
This is the agenda item that won't go away, isn't it?
Right. I mean, what's the addendum that y'all are even considering, is my question? I don't know.
It's a ten-page document.
Nobody knows. So is this from them that they sent, and...
I don't know.
Nobody asked me or showed it to me or anything, so I, I mean, if nobody knows, I would think you probably need to table it.
Why don't we do table it? That's probably a good idea, and then we'll just go ahead and check and see if they do really want to pay the rent to keep the building or not.
Sounds good.
Make the motion to table it. Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to table item number eleven, which is on the thirteen twenty-two Pelican Road, Lake Granberry. Second, by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Table the lease. All right. Now, item number twelve. Jeanne, how are you doing?
Just fine. Judge, commissioners, Lake Granberry Harbor is wanting to do a cleanup, and they reached out to Commissioner Andrews. We worked through everything in it, them getting rid of all of the items except the bulk, and we have requested ten vouchers for the homeowners association to do some work in cleaning up Lake Granberry Harbor.
Okay. You for this?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good thing. They're trying to clean some, clean some places up out there and just ask for a little help to be able to get rid of the...
You make a motion?
Absolutely. I make a motion that we give ten vouchers for the Hood County Citizens Collection Station with expiration date of June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, to Lake Granberry Harbor HOA.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to provide the vouchers for the, as stated, for Lake Granberry Harbor. Second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, the next item, discuss and take appropriate action in other use of the gazebo for the annual Bible readings, just like Judge Walton had adoptions being his favorite item. This is my favorite item of the year, and we have Pastor Mike McMahon up here to give us the brief description of what we're talking about here. And in case you need backup, you have the Reverend Marty Simpson behind you here. Could you bring him as backup or...
Actually, that's why I haven't turned around. I don't want to look her in the eyes when I have...
Okay, all right. What do you tell us about this Bible reading? We, now that we've got international fame, right?
Yes, we do. We have people from Uganda and other, I forgot the, we're Uganda and Lu, but anyway, we're in Africa, okay? And they call us on the phone, and then we take their phone and set it in front of, or our phone, and take it and set it in front of the microphone. We had, year before last, we had the opening chapters of Genesis read in Swahili, and we've got that option again. The only problem is that the governments over there are really getting tough. They want the people to take God out of the name of their ministries. They want them not to use the Bible anymore, you know, and all that kind of junk. But praise God, we've got some pastors over there who got backbone, and the pastors are saying, you're not telling me that, and I'm not going to do it. So we need to keep those folks in prayer. We really do. The Bible reading marathon has been going on now for about eighteen years, and when we first started, I, let me back up. It takes three hundred and sixty time reading slots, which is ninety hours if you read the Bible from Genesis one through Revelation twenty-one, twenty-two. And so we started out, and we would sit in the gazebo the day before the opening, and we would be praying with one another, and we'd be telling God, this is a holy, holy schedule you got for us, Father, and we're not talking about spiritual, we're talking about all the holes that are not filled, but we need people to read. Last year, when we opened up on Friday morning, three hundred and sixty time slots were full, and it has been going this way for several years now. I want to give Fred Orkut a star here because he's the guy who put us into signing up on through computer and so on. It's made all the difference in the world. This is a, this is a great program, a great ministry. We've had people saved in the gazebo. We've had people renew their faith, renew their commitment to the Lord while they're reading. I've had men who come up with their wives, and their wives are reading, and the men are standing back like this, you know, saying, okay, let's get going here, come on, get through. And then all of a sudden, someone will ask them, well, you can read if you would like. I've seen those men reduced to tears reading the word. It's, it's an amazing thing that takes place. We even have a drop in crime rate in Hood County the week that we have the Bible reading marathon. It is, I can't, I can't say enough about it other than to say that you all and those who have preceded you have done a wonderful thing for Hood County, because this makes a difference. We even have, sometimes we're in competition with the wine walk. If any of you have ever run down on the square with a wine walk on Saturday afternoon, what you will notice is that the music is going whoo, 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 and they're a block away from us, and they affect us. But you know what? People come from across the street with their little wine cups hung around their neck and so on, and they say, do you really do this? Do you really think that you can do this? And I say, yeah, would you like to read? Can we? So they take their wine cup off, some of them, others just leave it on, and they read the Bible. And then they come up afterwards and they say, would you help us start a Bible reading marathon where we are? I want you to know that this year is going to be the first year that we actually are going to help Mobile, Alabama, start a Bible reading marathon. Do you remember the little lady that I brought here several weeks ago now that she was all full of energy?
Right.
She's like a Coke bottle that's been shook up. You don't want to take the lid off because you know what's going to get all over you. But she has finally gotten some people involved over there, and what I'm going to ask for right now is if you, as a group or as individuals, would please give us a letter of recommendation regarding the Bible reading marathon so that she can take it to the, to the people in her county, the chief of police, the sheriff, county judge, and so on, and business people, so they can see that it makes a difference in there. But we can't, this county now, to be honest with you, can't do without the Bible reading marathon every year. It is a staple. I have people who now, it's, it's in the middle of December, I've got people in the next two weeks that will start calling me saying, are we ready to sign up yet? Can we sign up? And I'm going to have to tell them, no, wait, it's coming, but it's, and they'll say, okay, okay, I'm ready. So it's, it's a, I don't know how to describe it, the words get away from me. I'm a preacher. I'm not used to saying words like this, you know? But at any rate, it is a wonderful thing for Hood County, and I appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to conduct this every year. It makes a difference.
Well, you do a marvelous job. You...
Yes. May I add one thing that's off of this subject? Judge, the, the judge that we just honored, for heaven's sakes, what's his name?
Judge Walton.
Say it again?
Judge Walton.
Ralph Walton.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's what happens when you get up over your eighties, in case any of you all don't realize that. You can be walking along, minding your own business, thinking about stuff, and then you'll stop and say, what was I thinking about? It happens that way. Ralph Walton.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is unanimously approved.
Good.
And we'll get together and we'll write a letter and.
Super. Thank you.
This is what you said up here, reveal all the good recommendations. I think I can do that for you.
We'll work on it.
All right. That's a deal. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Mills, would you come up here, please, and discuss the appropriate action to join the opioid settlement agreement and term sheet through the Texas Attorney General's office? We go get millions out of it?
Not millions, no. Overall, it is, but not for Hood County. But it's been probably two months ago, Becky and I met with him. And basically, there's a big settlement that the AG has, has worked throughout the state of Texas on this settlement. And we just have to opt into doing it through the AG's office. A bunch of counties and even cities had hired their own counsel and there were all kinds of lawsuits going on all over the place. But what, and I don't fully understand all the background on it. But basically, if we just opt in, the AG already has it done. And if enough counties and cities sign up and, and agree to the AG's term sheet, then we can get a chunk of it. And it's, it's a decent amount of money. I forget the exact, but I mean, it's, there were different, I mean, it's in the hundreds of thousands, I think, over time, not right away. But it's, it's quite a bit of money. So I don't know if y'all have any questions about that?
You would recommend us?
Yes. I mean, there's a couple of different forms that hopefully should be in your packet, but a couple of things to sign, but just the, the settlement agreement and the term sheet to sign. And then there's a couple of just informational pages that were part of that package that they need signed.
Yeah, we, we talked about this when I went down to the judges and commissioners seminar conference back in October. And I think we'd be remiss if we don't do this. It's just kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, I'll move that Hood County join the opioid settlement agreement and term sheet through the Texas Attorney General's office.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to join the opioid settlement agreement and term sheet through the Texas Attorney General's office, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Motion carries by zero. Item number fifteen. Discuss to take appropriate action, authorize the library to paint a mural painted on the children's room wall in the library at a cost of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Cookie.
Hello, how are you doing?
Oh, doesn't look good.
Thank you. Good morning. I am here just to ask if I can put paint on the walls in the children's room. Ever since we put the mural on the wall, what, a year or so ago, it has made that room so inviting and so fun to walk into. Since that time, we have added other things like a framed picture from the author, well, not, not author, I'm sorry, from the illustrator of If You Give a Mouse a Cookie. You know, okay. I have an original illustration when she came to my school. I've saved that and framed it. And that is presently in the library on the wall, as well as in the windows. We've put some plants and some stuffed animals. We've added the, oh gosh, the manipulative on the walls where the little munchkins can develop their eye-hand coordination. You know, we've found a lot of things in that room. And so it's a lot of fun and very inviting for the families. When you walk in the door and you turn around, however, there's one naked wall up there that needs completion. It's just crying out for some color. And so the same artist, Ginny Nightlevins, has agreed to put a mural on that final wall to complete the room. It's an adjacent wall. She'll follow the same color scheme, you know, the same ideas. As you see, it has clouds and butterflies. And then in the middle of the wall, maintenance is installing a big clock. And that clock will have little ladybugs with one spot, two spots, three spots, on up to twelve spots. And so that will also finish off the room. So Friends of the Library have offered to pay for it. So all I'm asking you for is permission to put the paint on the walls.
Can you be the deal like that?
Can you be the deal like that? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Everybody's very proud of the way the library looks.
Yes, it has become very inviting and colorful and clean, nice, neat.
It's green, beautiful.
Yes.
I just realized, I wish I could get in there and get away, but I'm afraid I'll just hurt myself. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make that motion to authorize the library to have a mural painted on the children's room wall in the library, paid for by the Friends of the Library.
Yes.
Second.
That's the motion made by Commissioner Cotton to authorize the library to have a mural on the children's room wall in the library by Friends of, was it Friends of Library?
Yes.
At no cost to us, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Harold wanted to speak on this, but I thank you for going, you, you spoke earlier, so.
You were in favor. Okay, good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay, Sheriff. How can I spend the radio?
Judge Commissioners, back when we brought this before the court to approve the radio system from Harris, it had in that agreement, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars for two-year through five-year maintenance. And they said, go ahead and take that out of there. Because the city of Granbury hadn't officially decided what they wanted to do. So the total plan went from two million, fifty-one thousand dollars down to one million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four seventy. And now that everybody, the city of Granbury has decided what they're going to do, then they have came back with the appropriate plan for fifteen years. So it's a, it's laid out with the eighth year and the fourteenth year will get replacement equipment. The first year is under warranty. We won't start even our first year until next fall sometime after the system is up and running. So the second year is when the first payment would be due on this if it's passed. So we got plenty of time on that. Then it's broke down year to year on how much we pay. So this is a grand total of two and a half million dollars, but it's broke out in fifteen years, payments with replacement equipment in, like I said, the eighth year and the fourteenth year. This was looked at by the county attorney. He did come up with some issues that he had with it. So we sent it back to him. I think he had, he had five different questions on it. They did answer those and redo that, that agreement. So we've got everybody on the same page with that. So that's the agreement that you have for you now. So is there any questions? If this, another thing, this is today's price is not years into the future. So with inflation going, it could cost who knows how much in the future. So this is setting the replacement cost of that eighth year and the fourteenth year at today's price is not at whatever they might be in eight years from now. So it's going to save us money in the long run, I believe, and set it in stone right now. So it's, it's a lot of money if you say it real fast, but spread out over fifteen years.
All right. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I move that we approve and authorize the county judge to execute the L-three Harris P-25 radio system maintenance agreement with Hood, with Hood County.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson. Allow the county judge to execute the L-three Harris P-25 radio system maintenance agreement with Hood County, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries by zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, item seventeen. Discuss to take appropriate action for additional funding to replace failing heating, venting, and air conditioning units at the county jail. Mr. James Ryan, you got your hands full.
Yes, sir.
You've got plenty of work to do. This is called job security, Mr. Ryan.
Yes, sir, it is. Thank y'all. What we had is, we were doing an upgrade of the control system. We were up on the jail. One of the control technicians that works for Honeywell, as he was putting it in, he noticed something. And this was about three months ago. We noticed we started getting cracks in the heat exchangers. Those are natural gas-fired heaters. And those are packaged units. So the air conditioner and the heater and everything is all made together. All of these units are R-22 units. They're all anywhere between ten and fifteen years old. There's six of them. I do have, I didn't put it in your packet, but I do have pictures if you want to see what the cracks look like. I can let y'all take a look at that just to kind of give you a visual on what we're dealing with here. The reason we have to do something with this is for the simple fact that that, that's going to wind up the CO2 into the space. It's not safe. I was glad we did inspect them. I've got one now. I was glad we did inspect them. And.
Yuck.
It kind of worked me to the point that I've got propane at home where I live. So I inspected mine. That's how bad it shook me up. My unit's probably fifteen years old at the house. It still works fine. I've never had any problem with it. But these six particular units have failed. I've got the, I've got the gas turned off to them right now. So what we're doing is I looked into replacing those heat exchangers. Well, again, these are the old obsolete R-22 units. The price to replace them, the labor to do it is going to be sixty to seventy-five percent of what a new unit will cost. Thus, I've, I've got the bid for the six new units. I think that's the way to go. Freon, right now, for a jug of freon, I believe I put that in the notes, you know, it's eight, nine hundred dollars when you can get it on a good day. Most of the time, it's getting to the point anymore. I just can't get it. So y'all have been very good to me in the past. And the way we were looking at doing these units, we were doing a seventy-five thousand dollar bucket of money. As units failed, I would replace them. We did this actually four times. And if it's okay, I'd like to give you the spreadsheet. I'd like to show you where the money went, where the money's going. So I've been tracking this all along. And so you guys know exactly. We'll keep the tabs on it. And I know in the, again, the original project was pretty high to change lead. I think gentlemen, we're way under what we started out. So anyway, and in order to get these repaired, it's. It's a hundred and one thousand, I believe. If I can find it. There it is. Gentlemen, in order to replace these six units, it'll be one oh one, one twenty-eight. That's a, I know it's a, I know that's a substantial amount. It's more than I planned on. But I appreciate the fact that my contractor saw the first one and gave me a heads up. And that was Honeywell when they were doing our project. So I got a contractor to come out and go through every unit on the jail. So you know, there, there's a total of nineteen units at that jail. And I believe I had a conversation with you, Commissioner Andrews, yesterday. I told you there was nineteen. There are not all nineteen are on the roof. Twelve are on the roof. The rest are on the ground. So I misspoke when I told you there was nineteen on the roof. But that's how many units we're dealing with over there. So anyway, it.
So do you have to price these or did you go out competitive bid?
Actually, the bid that I got from was Texas Air. And this is Tip's contract that we've had with them. We've used them. The biggest problem is, and I've got six locked down and found. The problems supply. I just can't get them. They're hard to get. But I do have six right now. The last conversation I had, I can get my hands on six. Package units. And there's a lot of logistics to that because we got to have a crane. So we're trying to do them all at one time, get the crane one and done, be finished. But I still feel good about our plan and the way we're doing it. It just, this surprised me. And I was glad that somebody caught it.
So you don't have any heat then on these six units at the jail?
And that's, so right now, K and L cell, seg, holding, booking, FG and H cells and E cells don't have any heat. But the rest of the building's warm. It's not ideal, but we're getting by. We've had mild weather. So luckily, we've, this was caught soon enough. We can.
Freeze again and could be coming again.
We can get on this in the next, I'm pushing to get them started, if approved, in the next two weeks.
We just have to do that. These pictures scare me.
It got my attention.
Yes, sir.
And so that's something else. And just so you know, is, that's a lesson learned for, for my department. We do have gas-fired heaters here. So these are being looked at as well. But I don't anticipate anything on these right now due to the age. It's not as old.
Becky, is this fund fifty-five or is it in his budget? Judges, and I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the funding to replace the failing HVAC units on a county jail at the price of a hundred and one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Second.
I got a question. Are there any local government code?
So you don't have any heat then on these six units at the jail?
And that's, so right now, K and L cell, seg, holding, booking, FG and H cells and E cells don't have any heat. But the rest of the building's warm. It's not ideal, but we're getting by. We've had mild weather. So luckily, we've, this was caught soon enough.
Freeze again, it could be coming again.
We can get on this in the next, I'm pushing to get them started, if approved, in the next two weeks.
Would just have to do that. These pictures scare me.
It got my attention.
Yes, sir.
And so that's something else. And just so you know, is, that's a lesson learned for, for my department. We do have gas fired heaters here. So these are being looked at as well. But I don't anticipate anything on these right now due to the age. It's not as old.
Becky, is this fund 55, or is it in his budget?
It's 55.
Judge, and I'll make the motion to approve the funding to replace the failing HVAC units on a county jail at the price of $101,128.
Second.
I got a question. Are there any local government code bidding issues here, or are we good?
No, we're using a carbon contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve judicial refunding, funding to replace the six units, seconded by Commissioner Cotton, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you again, Mr. Riley.
Thank you. Yeah, I know.
Scary pictures there.
They are.
Grow up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. You did a good job. Okay. I'm gonna see if you got, you got, that's job security, isn't it, around here?
Yeah.
All right, item number 18, consider take appropriate action except for quote, for landscape services.
Yes, sir.
Yours?
Yes, sir. So I've restructured just a little bit. I've lost a few employees, and we reevaluated a lot of job duties. So right now, and I've just hired a new one. He'll start next week. I'm actually operating one man less than I normally did. So we got to looking at that. And with the landscaping, or the mowing, let's say, is getting more and more, I'm spending more and more money repairing and buying equipment. I thought, hey, let's go out and see what somebody else will do it for us. Maybe we can save a dollar. I can, the guy that I had doing my landscaping, I've got places that I can put him. I've got other things he can do, other needs that we're not getting done maybe as well, but I can do it with one less man. So I can save a little bit of money. So went out, did some bids. We got three bids on mowing. Because basically, the problem was I had one guy mowing. By the time he got one done, he was starting over again. And then we were not getting the library done as quick, or we wasn't getting the courthouse done as quick. And only one man can do as much as he can. So I went out, we talked to three different places. We got three different bids. Well, all of these gentlemen, every one of the folks that bid on it, they also are very knowledgeable in irrigation. We've got a lot of irrigation and things like that. So they can help us with that. But the one that, that we chose as being the number one was that well done for ULLC. They're local. He's, he's here in Granbury. Everybody I talked to is here in Granbury. I was trying to keep it local. And, you know, he wrote up a pretty good proposal on what his objective was, and it looks very good to us. We'll be doing the courthouse, the emergency operations center, the library, the law enforcement center, no bigger than what the historic jail is downtown. We're going to go ahead and do that. We do get a lot of help. I do get a lot of help from around here on these buildings, around Annex 1, 3, and here, is, most of that's all done by adult probation folks. They take care of that. But there's times that they can't do it, and we'll have to do it. So that's not part of this deal, but I still have lawnmower. I've still got all the equipment. We, we can help work with Lyndon. We work very close with her on, on all this. We can take care of it. But this is for a year, and this is what they'll charge us per month. And it will cost me $1,620 a month to mow. Now, most months in the summer, they're going to be every week. This time of year, not so much. But they will mow and weed eat, and then we'll continue to take care of the shrubbery and, you know, trimming trees and doing the other stuff. I did put it in the budget. The money is in the budget. We did check on it. Everything's good. This falls within those budget dollars. It's $19,440 annually.
I remember right in the budget hearing, you reduced by one employee, didn't you, to do this?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. So this, you know, basically, at the end of the day, not pretending I know, but if you figure the wages and everything and doing away with that one employee, I've probably saved in the accounting $20,000 by not replacing that and going this route.
Yep. Yep. It sounds good.
Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Let's see. I'll make the motion to accept a quote for landscape services from, well done for ULLC for an annual cost of $19,440.
That's correct.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to accept the quote, well done for you for $19,440 annually, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Item number 19, discuss and take appropriate action to replace the purchase of a 2022 Ford F550 18-foot mobile library outreach vehicle for the Hood County Library at a cost of $273,898 for funding interest. Okay, Ms. Jennifer Logstons, thank you.
Good morning, again. I had come to y'all several months ago about the need for mobile outreach services. When I first took the job a couple of years ago, in fact, I think it was pretty much two years ago today when I started, one of the things that was brought to my attention of a need that the community needed, the county needed, was transportation needs of citizens. There's a lot of people that don't come into town or don't have ways to get into town. And the Hood County Library serves the county, but it's located in the center in Granbury. But we've got smaller communities like Toler and Crescent and La Pan, and we have some other neighborhoods where income is an issue. And so they don't get out and about and bring in their kids as much to the library. And so this was something that was already talked about before I came to the library. And then as I did some research and talked with, and talked with some different people, like at the United Way, they had done a big survey back in 2019. One of the biggest needs in Hood County at that time was a transportation need. And then with COVID coming and changing the landscape of everything, needs have gotten greater, especially when it comes to access to internet services, things like that. People have cut their budgets. And so being able to have a, a mobile service library, it can help close some gaps. I mean, the purpose of a library is to provide access, access to its citizens, to information, access to, to books to read, access to gain knowledge. And that's all the library is for, is the access point. And if our only access point is in the middle of town, then we're not serving everyone in the community. Also, the community is growing very rapidly. And as that does, as the community grows in numbers and population, then our ability to serve becomes more difficult and be able to keep our accreditation. Accreditation's based on how many people you serve and how many books or items you have in your library and the things that you provide. And so as we grow bigger population, this will help service, service the community kind of as a second branch to help us keep the, the ability to serve everyone. This, this bookmobile will be, I guess a bookmobile, we'll be able to drive up into a neighborhood, drive up into La Pan, Toler, somewhere, and it'll be able to open up. People will be able to get on it, get books. We'll be able to provide printing services, internet access. So maybe we can pull up in a neighborhood, and we're going to be there for two or three hours if people need to come up and tap into our wireless so that they can use the internet. They can do so. We'll also have Chromebooks available to them. In my mind, what I see is, you know, for one week, we would go to family oriented places and have a collection of materials for them and services for them. And then the next week, we would go to retirement facilities. Those are some people who also don't have access to get into the library, a lot of places. They have some of their own libraries at retirement communities, but we would be able to pull up, unload, and do a lobby stop so that they're not having to get in and out of that bus. But we could bring more books and services and programs to them. So my, my vision would be to focus, let's say you've got a month of time, would be to spend a week in a rotation of going to all the different smaller communities or some of the lower socially economically disadvantaged communities, bring them those resources. The next week, hit some of the retirement facilities and bring services to them. And then another week, just focus on programs because not only can we bring materials to them, but we can bring programs to them. We can bring story times. We can bring some adult classes, some computer classes, and things like that. So I think that it's an investment in the people of Hood County. It's an investment for the future. It's putting books in hands of kids who might not otherwise get that experience. We have great programs. We have a lot of response here in town. We get lots of people coming to our programs. And I think that if we can go out to those other communities, we're just going to reach that many more people to, so that's-
Can you go to our East Crescent, if I'm not wrong?
Yeah.
We've got the mayor right here.
Yes. We, we did some outreach. We tried to do some outreach last spring. And it wasn't as successful as we hoped, but it's probably because we couldn't get into, and I mean, we didn't have the ability to do what we needed to do. And location was an issue, but also lots of construction out there right now. So I think that, that was part of it. But if we have a bookmobile, we can drive right up to the spot where we need to be instead of asking people to come to us. We would go to them. And it would be flexible. We'd be there in the evenings. We'd be there on the weekends because we want to be there when families are there, not just, you know, we're not going to be there at nine o'clock in the morning when everybody's at work.
That struck me is your willingness to be there at six o'clock in the evenings and stuff like that. Families are there. This might be a workout at 8:00 to 5:00. So again, kudos to you and your library staff for wanting to reach out and help all the people in Hood County. So that's, we've got these open, we've got some very important speakers up here, too, to help you out. The first one, Rose Simpson.
Thank you so much, Judge and Commissioners, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on something that I am most passionate about because I have a personal experience with it. I strongly support the use of a mobile unit to reach out to underserved communities here in Hood County. I too grew up in Fort Worth in an underserved minority community where I did not have access to resources of the public library. It was the dream of a custodian there, Mrs. Ellen Mae Shemley, to take a bookmobile out to underserved communities throughout Fort Worth. She was there in the summer. She was there on Saturdays. The children gathered there at the park in my local community. And we had the joys of learning to read, for reading. I took my younger brother and picked out books for him and taught him to read the summer before he started to school. It made for us lifetime readers, lifetime learners, and it so very much. And as a retired English teacher and school librarian, it followed me throughout my life, the interest in reading, the interest in being a lifelong reader. And I see this mobile unit as something that would be just so great for Hood County to have, to reach out to people who are now underserved, who can't make it to the library, who can't get the resources of the library. I think it would make such a difference in our community and in making lifetime readers and lifetime learners, the young people and the older people in our community also. Thank you for your consideration of funding this resource for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's Susan Scott.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Susan Scott, and I'm the president of the Hood County Library Foundation Board. This has been an issue that we are dear to our hearts. When COVID hit, everything closed. Jennifer and her staff realized right away that there was going to be a need. They gathered books, got in their own cars, paid for their own gas, and drove books around to nursing homes and various people they knew wouldn't have a chance to read and how important that was to them. That's how much they love Hood County. Rose gave a wonderful testimony as to what a mobile unit can do in the lives of somebody. And we all know Hood County has many areas that are underserved. So I personally and the foundation strongly recommend that you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Brown, you want to say a few words about this?
Yes. The Dallas County Library Bookmobile did a great deal to educate me and therefore inflict me on this Commissioners' Court. If y'all pass this, y'all can inflict future students here in Hood County on future Commissioners' Court. So I wholly endorse this.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mayor Paul T. Canyon, please welcome.
Thank you. Honorable Judge and Commissioners, I appreciate the moment. You know, I can't say enough about the bookmobile. It's very exciting for this mayor of now a small town, which is rapidly growing. Our heaviest concentration of children is on Highway 171, still in Hood County, but better known as the pods. So we've really partnered with Jennifer. She drove it all, her staff loaded books sweating into their cars. I mean, it was unbelievable. But what we didn't do is we weren't able to take the books to where they needed to be. So the kiddos were going to have to come to us. So just to be able to have the new bookmobile would allow travel to the sites, and that's going to be important. Some areas where we may have children and grownups that find it difficult to navigate, navigate to Hood County Library, I know that's already been mentioned. Some areas where residents live on the outskirts of Hood County. So your La Pan residents, Toler, also growing, growing, growing. But sometimes we're not able to get them into the city to go to the library. Jennifer mentioned rotating. I thought that was so awesome, the different sites where she feels that we have a concentration of kiddos and senior adults, even adults. It would offer more than just books. You know, when I was growing up, I thought about, when you said library, you meant books and you meant be quiet. But now, one would be able to check out books and utilize other services such as computer classes or a particular program that Jennifer and her staff have decided that would serve a particular need. I'm really thrilled about the other example that would be offered, and that's to access Wi-Fi. We take that for granted. Gosh, I just get on my phone and I'm there. No, not everybody has Wi-Fi. And so if you can expose this group of people to computers at an early age or even an older age and allow them to have Wi-Fi, I'm impressed at what that could bring to the, to Hood County. We have worked more closely with Jennifer Logstons and her staff at the Hood County Library this past year. And we found that most children and adults do not even drive to City Hall to grab a book, not City Hall, to the city library, sorry. We had, we tried to have an event at the Crescent City Hall, and it, it just, there was no turnout because they're just not able to convince the parent to drive them. Good working class at the pods, you know, everybody's business, a lot busy, a lot of shift work. And so sometimes mom and dad are sleeping when you are wanting to go to an event. Taking this effort and making it mobile will be a huge difference. I'm confident of that. Hats off to Jennifer and her staff. Thank you, Commissioners, for your consideration on this worthy program.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Okay. After that, do I hear an appropriate motion?
I just have one question. And that, you're going to, your current staff is going to be able to handle all this with the mobile, with the bookmobile?
Yes. We, and we did, when we did budgets, we added another full time, and I haven't hired that yet. But with that added full time person, yes.
You'll be good?
We'll be good.
Okay. Thank you.
And you're, you don't not need a CDL to drive this thing?
No, thank goodness.
Okay.
Although my husband keeps telling me I need to go practice driving these bigger vehicles. He keeps telling, we need to go test drive. I said, I don't think I'm going to be driving it, but I will do that if you think I need to. But we don't, I don't have to have a, nobody has to have a CDL. It is diesel, but no CDL. So it-
But, no, we don't, I don't have to have a C, nobody has to have a CDL. It is diesel, uh, but no CDL, so it should be.
Okay.
And it does have a backup camera. I did make sure of that.
I've got two questions.
Okay.
One, will you have the capability on the vehicle, if someone does not have a library card, to issue them a library card at that time?
Yes.
Okay. Two, will it be ADA compatible?
Yes. We, it does have a lift.
Okay.
It does have a lift.
Thank you. Because I know there's, you know, certain place, especially when you go to the rest homes or the, you know, nursing homes or the retirement centers. You know, a lot of those people will need that.
Yes, and I do hope to, at those places, be able to do what you call a lobby stop, where we can actually unload. The, I've got it designed where the shelving can roll on and off so that I don't have to, like, carry all the books out there and stack them all in there and then... Because if you think about it, the collection of, of materials I'm gonna take to a family event is gonna look different than the collection of materials that I take to a retirement facility. And so we'll have to change those out. So I went ahead and asked to have rolling units that we can roll off, roll on the new, and then I can put extra shelves in there. If I wanna go into a retirement facility, I'll roll them all out and go into their lobby. I wouldn't ask them to come out into the weather and get on and off that bus. So, I, I, that's how I've kind of navigated that.
Always thinking.
And last but not least, this is coming out of Fund eighty-three, which is the American Rescue Act money that's been set aside, correct?
I just make mention, we already approved, and that's fine for it to be on the agenda again. I don't think we had an exact price, but we did approve this through the court.
And I think once we sign, once we approve this quote and all that and sign, I think it's a thirty percent down, and then we work, once we do that, then they can start it. It's a three hundred day out, you know, to get the vehicle. Hopefully that's, uh, hopefully that's exaggerated. I really, I really hope it comes sooner than that, but-
I wouldn't bet on that.
I know. It's tough times out there.
Better get some chips.
Okay.
Judge, then I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion to purchase a 2022 Ford F-550 eighteen-foot mobile library outreach vehicle for the Hood County Library at the cost of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars, paid through, or paid, uh, through the, through Fund eighty-three, capital money.
Sir. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the purchase of a mobile library outreach vehicle, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all that supported in favor of this. Very eloquent speech, Ms. Simpson, Ms. Scott, Ms. Mayor. Y'all did very, very well. That's good, Dr. Grant. This is very important.
Be adjourned.
We are adjourned.